The Senate will come to order. The senators will please take their seats. Those persons not entitled to the privileges of the floor will please retire to the gallery. Good morning, senators. That was rousing. Wonderful. It's good to see all of you back. And then go health. The senators in all in attendance, if you are able, please stand. We will be led in prayer this morning by the Reverend Dr. Charles T. Dupree of St. Paul's Episcopal Church in Richmond. Following the prayer, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be done by Tara Hamilton Perkins, Chief Deputy Clerk in the Senate Clerk's office.
Good morning and thank you for all you do. Let us pray. Oh God, what we bring to you today, we bring you. Take what we offer. Take what we offer and turn it into something amazing. Take what we offer and turn it into something like the burning bush or the whirlwind or water from stone cold rock. Take what we offer today and turn it into something like the raging waters turned still or manna from where we didn't expect it. Take what we offer today and turn it into a healing hand, a bomb in Gilead. Take what we offer today and turn it into a table laid in the presence of mine enemies or a cup that runneth over. Oh Lord, we bring it all to you today. Now take what we bring and turn it into something amazing, a miracle, something that will bring life and understanding and healing and hope and peace to our lives and to our world. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to... The clerk will call the roll. All those present will please vote aye. The clerk will close the roll.
Do you have a quorum, Madam President?
The clerk will now report a certain communication on the desk.
Secretary of the Commonwealth proclamation. In accordance with the provisions of Article Four, Section Six, Article Five, Section Five of the Constitution of Virginia and the powers thereby vested in the governor to call a special session of the General Assembly, I Glenn Youngkin, Governor of Virginia, do hereby summon the members of the Senate and the House of Delegates constituting the General Assembly of Virginia to meet in special session commencing at 10:00 a.m. on the sixth day of September 2023 for the purpose of the completion of amendments to the 2023-2024 biennial budget, given under my hand as Governor of Virginia and under the lesser seal of the Commonwealth at Richmond this 29th day of August 2023 and in the 247th year of the Commonwealth. Glenn Youngkin, Governor, K. Cole James, Secretary of the Commonwealth.
We note that the Senate is operating under the rules of the Senate, which were adopted at the commencement of the 2020 session. Sergeant at arms.
Madam President, a message from the House.
Please receive it.
The delegate from Scott, Delegate Kilgore.
Thank you, Madam. Madam President, I've been directed by the Speaker of the House of Delegates to inform the Senate that the House has agreed to HGR 6001, limiting legislation established in the schedule for the conduct of business coming before the 2023 Special Session One, and request the concurrence of the Senate. Thank you.
We thank the delegate from Scott. Chair now recognizes the Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke, for the purpose of taking up a resolution.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I move that the rules be suspended, the Committee on Rules be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, the readings of the title and engrossment be waived, and Senate Resolution 601 be taken up for immediate consideration.
The question is, shall the rules be suspended, the Committee on Rules be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, the readings of the title and engrossment be waived, and Senate Resolution 601 be taken up for immediate consideration? As many as are in favor of that motion will record their votes aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Does any senator desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-seven, noes one.
Ayes thirty-seven, noes one. The rules are suspended to take up the resolution for immediate consideration. The clerk will report the resolution.
Senate Resolution Number 601, 2023, Special Session One, Operating Resolution.
Chair again recognizes the Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the resolution be agreed to.
The question is, shall the resolution be agreed to? As many as are in favor of agreeing to the motion will record their votes aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Does any senator desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-eight, noes zero.
Ayes thirty-eight, noes zero. The resolution is agreed to. Chair recognizes Senator Sasselaw and that he is ordered to inform the House of Delegates that the Senate is duly organized and ready to proceed to business. The Senate will stand at ease. Chair recognizes the Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I move that the rules be suspended, the Committee on Rules be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, the readings of the title be waived, and House Joint Resolution 6001 be taken up for immediate consideration.
The question is, shall the rules be suspended, the Committee on Rules be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, the readings of the title be waived, and House Joint Resolution 6001 be taken up for immediate consideration? As many as are in favor of that motion will record their votes aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Does any senator desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-nine, noes zero.
Ayes thirty-nine, noes zero. The rules are suspended to take up the resolution for immediate consideration. Chair recognizes... Chair recognizes the Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the resolution be agreed to. This is the resolution establishing schedule for the conduct of business coming before the special session.
Chair recognizes the Senator from James City County, Senator Normant.
Good morning, Madam President.
Good morning, Senator.
Madam President, a point of inquiry on the interpretation of the House resolution. And if I could direct your attention to lines thirty and thirty-one, please. And perhaps Madam Clerk's office may want to consult with you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Madam President. As I read that, it is dealing with proposed amendments to the budget bill. And as I understand it, if either body somehow were to acquiesce to a budget amendment that might come from the floor, that this language seems to prohibit the other body from even considering it, is that a reasonable interpretation?
Will be at ease, Senator.
Would please mark this day on your calendar.
So noted. Chair recognizes the Senator from Charlottesville, Senator Deeds.
Madam President, I request the record reflected. My desk mate is out of his seat today. The Senator from Roanoke City is out of his seat today due to pressing personal business.
It will be so noted, Senator. Chair recognizes the Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, speaking to the resolution.
The Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I think the Senator from James City indicated lines thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two and the impact. I want to talk about the precedents. Madam President, this is the first time that we have seen this type of language in a procedural resolution, one that would prohibit a member or a committee from being able to amend a bill that was introduced in the regular process. Now, Madam President, I realize that this bill is somewhat different than most in that it comes at the end of a session and is being treated as a conference report in the process. But Madam President, I do have concerns about this language being in a procedural resolution and setting that precedent for future bodies as they look at legislation that is filed in the normal course. So, Madam President, even though I expect that this procedural resolution will pass, I want to make sure that the members knew and understood that this is a sea change and a total difference from how this body has operated at any point in time. And as a result, I will vote against the procedural resolution.
Chair recognizes Senator Stanley, the Senator from Franklin County.
Thank you, Madam President, speaking to the resolution.
The Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the Senate, I join my friend, the Senator from Hanover, in his concern. And here's why. What we're doing right now opens the door to the way it's going to be done in the future. I commend those ladies and gentlemen who worked so hard to put this budget together and the time that it took. But it took too much time. Too much time has passed because we should have gotten it done as we're required to do, as we are in the first year within the sixty days and in the second year in the forty-five days. We've not done that in a while. And because we've not done that in a while, we kind of accept this as, oh, this is the way it's going to be done. But it's not supposed to be done that way. And there's very good reasons why it's not supposed to be done that way. And first and foremost, because the public deserves to be involved. Transparency is required. And fresh and lively debate in the form of floor debate and floor amendments is what makes sure that we have the best product put out for the citizens of the Commonwealth of Virginia. As the Senator from Hanover raises this concern, so do I. Where does this lead us as we start into the next cycle of the General Assembly with new members who have never known the precedent to be one way or the other? Is this now the accepted way that we do things? We just wait till session is over and a gentle few of the chosen go and decide and make those decisions for themselves and then come out and say, here it is. And oh, by the way, you can't amend it. You can't participate for your constituents. You have to vote up or down. Oh, and by the way, the forty-eight hour rule really doesn't matter either because we've rushed you to the Capitol and we know it's inconvenient for you either in the election year or your business or your family or vacation. And that compels us to go, yeah, I only want to be here one day. I want to get this done. I like pretty much everything in it. I'll just waive it and I'll throw away hundreds of years of precedent, of tradition, of rules that there is a reason why we have these rules, so that we don't make mistakes, so that we don't harm the public, and that we do our job. That's why we ran for this job. That's why we were elected. And now we have to. It is our obligation to live up to that responsibility, not to come in, breeze in, agree to no amendments, breeze out, go back to your lives. There should be lively floor debate and discussion. There should be amendments allowed. I know the Senator from Roanoke County, he loves amendments. Loves putting them in. Loves watching him getting shot down by y'all. But ladies and gentlemen, that's the process. That's what's required of us. And I might like everything in this budget, but I would still vote against this resolution because it changes the dynamic of the process. I am more concerned about the process than I am about what is in this budget when I make this argument. We should stay here, get the work done like we usually do. This is not, you know, everybody wants you to close your eyes and say, this is like a conference report. And I get it. eyes and say, this is like a conference report, and I get it. Conference reports are after we've passed the budget. It goes in the conference because we didn't agree. This is not a conference report. Doesn't look anything like it's a bill, a standalone piece of legislation, and because it's a standalone piece of legislation, it should be considered thusly. We should live by the forty-eight-hour rule. It was just introduced right now, but, oh, let's waive that. It's okay. We got it over the weekend. We should have three readings and amend on the third and debate on the third and pass on the third, but we're not even doing that. This resolution says you can't, and when this is put into stone, it shall remain in stone for years to come. Let us, for those that are coming back, not start something that we will regret, and for those that are retiring, let us not leave this chamber with something that is not in its best interests and not in the people's best interests. I ask you to vote against this resolution to amend it. I will not be voting for it. I understand if you do, but I understand this. I think this sets a bad precedent that once we go down this road, we'll never be able to turn around. Thank you, Madam President.
Chair recognizes the senior Senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove.
Thank you, Madam President, speaking to the resolution.
The Senator may continue.
Thank you, Madam President. Ladies and gentlemen, hopefully, this may be my last session. Who knows? But I will tell you this, as much as I love the gentleman from Franklin, we disagree on this. We should have had a budget months ago. We should have done the people's work months ago. We have the opportunity now to vote on this resolution so that we can pass a budget that should have been done months ago. Now, as far as setting precedent, my good friend, the senior Senator from Virginia Beach, could actually put in a resolution in the next session to change any precedent. He won't, but he could. So, the whole idea of precedents and we're going to be stuck with this forever just is a nonstarter. We need a budget for the Commonwealth of Virginia. We have struggled to get a budget for the Commonwealth of Virginia. It is time for us to do the people's work now, not because we think we're superior, or we need three readings, or we should do amendments, whatever. We have waited too long. There is public safety, there's education, there's mental health, there's veterans' benefits in the budget we are going to adopt, hopefully adopt, today, and this resolution gives us that avenue. So, ladies and gentlemen, please, as much as I hate to disagree with my wonderful colleague, it is time for us to take up the people's business and do what should have been done months ago. Thank you, Madam President.
Chair recognizes Senator Norman, the Senator from James City County.
Thank you, Madam President, speaking to the motion.
The Senator may continue.
I want to thank my colleagues from Chesapeake and Franklin, who I think make some very cogent observations, perhaps as others who are drawing some attention elsewhere. I would say to you that it is a precedent. There is no question about that, but let me remind you of a very stark reality. You know, if you do not like this as a precedent, I disagree with my friend from Franklin. This is not set in stone, and this is not permanent. What you are observing is a reflection of the majority of a Senate of Virginia, and while it may be disturbing to some of us that our Democratic colleagues have been in a majority for four years, they are, and consequently, just as when the Republicans were in a majority, I am unequivocally confident that we did some things procedurally that were not embraced with enormous affection by our Democratic friends on the other side. That is the ruling of a majority. So, I join my colleague from Chesapeake in saying, the time has come to vote for a budget. We need to do it today. If you don't like it, don't vote for it, for whatever reason may be true to yourself, other than substantive provisions, but I will say to you, I am absolutely confident a budget is coming out of here today, no matter what the objections are to what is not a precedent, and no matter what your reactions are to the substantive provisions, and I would encourage the members to support the resolution and the budget.
The question is, shall House Joint Resolution 6001 be agreed to? As many as are in favor of agreeing to the resolution will record their votes. Aye, those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Does any senator desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty, noes nine.
Ayes thirty, noes nine. The resolution is agreed to. The Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke, will inform the House...
I'm calling together the meeting of the Senate Finance and Appropriations Committee. Would the clerk call the roll?
Senator Sazlo.
Senator Normant.
Senator Hanger. Senator Lucas.
Here.
Senator Newman.
Senator Ruff.
Senator Vogel.
Senator Edwards.
Senator Deeds.
Senator Locke.
Senator Peterson.
Senator Marsden.
Senator Eben.
Here.
Senator Barker.
Here.
Senator Howell. Mr. Co-Chair, you have a quorum.
All right, thank you. What we're going to do is have a presentation of the bill, the Senate Bill 6001, by staff, and we will go through various people presenting different sections of the bill, and then we will open it up for questions and comments from the members.
Thank you, Senator Barker. I am going to make a quick public service announcement related to the bill and the enactment clauses, just because there have been some questions. Just so everyone's aware, enactments two through nineteen were adopted in Chapter Two, which was the 2022 Special Session One. They are already reflected in the code and remain in the Appropriation Act for a record. However, you can't change those strike-throughs or the italics, but they are existing from Chapter Two, and that's enactments numbers two through nineteen. The new ones are enactments twenty through twenty-six, and that's for this special session, so you'll see those, and then the enactment twenty-nine is reflecting that those don't expire and become codified, and the two in between have to do with previous existing and when the budget expires and the previous update to the grocery tax. So now that that's out of the way, let's talk about on slide number four from the PowerPoint. Let's talk about the process to get here. As you might remember, the House bill and the Senate bills that were in the introduced budget, specifically the House Bill 1400, became the skinny budget, and that included spending of a billion dollars... spending of $1 billion from seven amendments. There are details on the next slide, so I won't spend a lot of time on that, but mostly K-12-related updates and some one-time items. The skinny budget had to be taken from a small bill standpoint and enrolled for a starting point for this bill, which Senate staff did. And then there are a number of other things, though, that has changed since December that I want to cover. The first of which, I'll just remind you again, the skinny budget appropriated over $1 billion. Additionally, there's less tax revenue for fiscal year 2024 as compared to what the December forecast that didn't get adopted because the budget wasn't adopted from the governor in the introduced budget. There's less revenue. Currently withholding and sales tax have underperformed that forecast, so that has been adjusted. Next, the pass-through entity tax, which has been in the news quite a bit. That was not revenue-neutral by fiscal year, and because of that, that has to be accounted for. So in this budget proposal, there is $1 billion set aside out of the revenue to account for the refunds that will happen in this fiscal year from the over-collections in the previous fiscal year. And then additionally, crossing the fiscal year without adopting an updated official forecast resulted in that higher surplus, as you might know, and that does require some calculations and/or deposits either that are required under the Constitution or by statute. And therefore, the following statutory set-asides have been incorporated in the bill. That includes a revenue reserve fund deposit at about $290 million, the Water Quality Improvement Fund A at about $409 million, and Water Quality Improvement Fund B, which is about $105 million. Again, those things could have been overridden. They're required statutorily, and they are set aside in this budget. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tyler to quickly go through the rest of these items on the forecast and taxes.
Turning to slide number five, so April detailed the skinny budget. There were five general fund spending items, and at the end of Chapter 769, the skinny budget, the ending balance or unappropriated balance is $848 million. This is the starting point for Senate Bill 6001 prior to recognizing any general fund cash balances and revenue surplus. Turning to slide number six, you see the year-end fiscal year 23 revenue surplus totaled $3 billion. Because the skinny budget didn't update the revenue forecast for economic adjustments, the forecast is largely from the fall of 2021, which means it's missing inflation and wage growth that's happened during that time period. And so that gives you the $3 billion surplus that will be recognized in another slide as resources available for spending. I want to mention a large reason for that surplus is related to the pass-through entity tax that April mentioned, estimated at $1 billion. Turning to slide number seven, the administration provided conferees with a revised general fund revenue forecast. They provided several scenarios, and the conferees agreed to use a forecast with more downside risk after their meeting with the Governor's Advisory Council on Revenue Estimates. If you look on slide number seven, the revenue reforecast adjustment provides $223.5 million in additional resources. This is largely from sources such as interest income, which have outperformed because of the federal reserves actions, and then corporate income as profits have continued to rise for corporations. Turning to slide number eight, the bill before you today includes tax policy actions that total $2 billion. It provides ongoing tax relief of about $200 million annually in the next biennium, and that's on top of the $1.2 billion that's already been adopted in the last budget. A lot of the one-time spending and tax policy actions are related to the tax rebate of $200 and $400, which is $907 million, and then $1 billion for the pass-through entity tax. But there is an additional increase to the standard deduction, eliminating the military retirement subtraction, age limit, business interest expense deduction, and then some continuation of tax policy legislation. And then there's the reinstatement of the sales and use tax holiday until July 1, 2025, and sets the calendar year 2023 for the weekend of October 20. Turning to slide number nine, you'll see that the net available general fund resources available for appropriation after doing the tax policy actions are $2.5 billion. This includes the reversion of FY22 surplus amounts and WQIF amounts from fiscal year 22, reversion of FY23 Water Quality Improvement Fund, the revenue reserve fund deposit related on FY23 surpluses, and then the revenue reforecast and other agency balance reversions. You'll notice that I said total general fund resources are 2.5, spending is about 2.4, leaving an unappropriated balance of $7.3 million in Senate Bill 6001. I wanted to quickly highlight that in total, there's about $3.5 to $3.7 billion in one-time spending actions. That includes $1.9 billion for the tax policy actions that are one-time, and then about $1.8 in spending in operating or capital. And I'm going to turn it over to Wendy if there's no questions on resources.
Proceed.
Good morning. Regarding the K-12 education, this starts on slide 11. And as you'll see, we have $653 million in investments in K-12 education. The largest amount is $418 million, which is provided for one-time flexible funding to school divisions. The allocation includes a combination of at-risk funding that is targeted for at-risk students as well as the general population of per pupil amounts. These funds are flexible and can be carried over to the next biennium. However, there is a request to prioritize funds for implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act, which goes into place next year regarding the expansion through grade eight, as well as prioritization of expenditures for learning loss. School divisions are going to be required to report how they will use these funds as well as how they will be addressing the learning loss. This is also for the federal ESER funds as well that they'll be reporting on. The next item is the expansion or the growth of the support positions from 21 to 24 per student to per thousand students, and at $152 million. And also want to highlight two others, the 2% salary increase for SOQ-funded staff as well, and that is effective January 1. The last item we'll highlight is the school safety and security grants, and there's a combination of both general fund and non-general fund dollars to provide school safety and security grants to school divisions and preferences given to ones with low LCI. Moving on to slide 12, we'll note with the flexible funding, I mentioned a lot of the different details regarding that. There is a floor of $150,000 per school division for the small school divisions. In addition, there's language regarding childcare staffing ratios and VPI mixed delivery regarding teacher licensure requirements. And the last item that we'll highlight is the establishment of a joint subcommittee on elementary and secondary education funding. This is to review the policy recommendations from the JLEC report in July and to provide a timeline and implementation for those policy recommendations, and the first report is due November of next year. On slide 13, in other education, there's funding for the Library of Virginia as well as for Commission of the Arts. And then moving over to higher education, starting on slide 15, there's two large amounts in the Maintain Affordable Access. This is to provide funding on the operations side to institutions to address more recent inflationary costs as well as other expenditure increases. And then the other area is to provide financial aid to low and middle-income students as well as to support a Pell initiative to both attract and retain low-income students and ensure that they complete and get a degree. There's funding also provided for ODU, EVMS, the merger costs, and for workforce initiatives at the community college system, and then also the Workforce Credential Grant Program that is included, sometimes known at the community colleges as Fast Forward. So that's targeted towards the non-credit industry-based credentials. Included on slide 15 is some additional money for research. And then moving over to slide 16, I'll highlight a few items regarding the language. There is an establishment also on the higher red side for a joint subcommittee on higher education funding, and the priority is to have a review of operations funding models as well as a financial aid funding model. And the last thing I'll highlight is with Richard Blan College, this is to charge the Secretary of Education to review a governance structure. And with that, I will turn things over to Mike with Health and Human Services, unless there are any questions.
Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So turning to Health and Human Resources, the priority in this area was behavioral health, which has been throughout since last December, even in the governor's introduced budget. You can see slide 18 summarizes the total for behavioral health, just within the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, about $155 million is being provided. I would just highlight the ones that are more, I think you're familiar with what was in the governor's proposed budget, which is really focused on the crisis services. This also includes $30 million for permanent supportive housing, which promotes stable housing for those with serious mental illness. There's about an additional 5% increase specific for the community services boards. There's additional funding to kind of fund the inflation for the Step Virginia program, additional funding for children's mental health, and the Virginia Mental Health Access Program, which supports pediatricians in their office in providing behavioral health services to kids. In Medicaid, on slide 19, just to highlight a few actions, the largest, a few provider rate increases was personal care. They would increase 5% on January 1. There's a 10% increase for community-based Medicaid behavioral health services also on January 1. 500 developmental disability waiver slots will be added on January 1. 600 were just added in the current Appropriation Act in July 1, so that brings the total number of slots in fiscal year 24 to 1,100 slots. And there's some additional funding to support the Children's Hospital, the King's Daughters, with supplemental payments to support their Children's Mental Health Hospital. Just to note that overall in HHR, it's actually a net reduction in funding, and that's because you see on the last line, there's about $262 million in Medicaid savings. This is primarily to reflect the enhanced federal match under the public health emergency as well as the movement of managed care payments from one fiscal year to another to maximize the federal match rate. So that's really one-time savings reflected there. Moving to slide 20, just a few other items to highlight in Health and Human Resources. The largest one, the auxiliary grant rate increase, which supports lower-income individuals that need assisted living facility or services, an increase from, to 2,055 a month. It's a little over 1,600 now, so this is over a 25% increase, so it is the largest increase in some time. There's also some funding for healthcare workforce, specifically behavioral home loan repayment, nurse preceptors, and there's $5 million in ARPA funds for the Earn to Learn Program, which supports nursing programs in hospitals. And then I'll just also highlight the state match for drinking water. That draws down an initial $97 million in federal funds for drinking water projects. Then lastly, slide 21, just has listed the various language items in HHR. Probably the only one that I would just note here is, within the Children's Services Act, the implementation of the rate setting for special education private day is actually stopped. So that's been a concern of the providers that you've probably heard from. So unless there are any questions, I will turn it over to Katie for public safety.
Moving on to slide 23, I'll just highlight a few items.
All right, could you go ahead and start processing there?
Oh, absolutely. So there's $30 million in public safety for community violence reduction grants to localities. That includes $15 million for the Operation Ceasefire Grant Fund, $10 million for a new Safer Communities Program, and $5 million for the Firearms Violence Prevention and Intervention Grant Fund. Moving down, there's also $5.1 million for local law enforcement, mental health commitment, custody, and transport. This is to assist local law enforcement agencies with the cost of TDO and ECOs. And then there's also $1 million for a new witness protection program to help witnesses safely testify. Moving to slide 24, I'll just highlight a couple items. So there are some positions for the state police to enforce new penalties related to organized retail crime, and also some positions to expand impaired driving enforcement training. And finally, there's a reduction of $5.9 million each year for the Cannabis Control Authority Operating Budget. This leaves them with a general fund budget of $5.3 million ongoing, which is sufficient for their duties for the medical cannabis program and some ancillary duties like public health campaigns. The other thing I'll highlight that's listed under Central Appropriations is $10 million designated for victims of mass violence, victims of mass violence. That is going to be held in central accounts while a work group makes recommendations for how to structure that fund to serve those victims. And if there are no questions, I'll hand it over to Kendra.
Thank you. Moving on to Commerce and Trade and Economic Development on slide 26, a couple of items I'd like to highlight. The total Commerce and Trade budget is, we are adding an additional $268 million, $261 million of that is for economic development incentive programs. The highlights of the funding include the Business Ready Sites Program Fund, which will receive an additional $125 million. And these are the sites that are matching grants for localities, and that includes $50 million that was reserved from the fiscal year 2022 budget. And then the Business Ready Sites Acquisition Program Fund will receive $75 million. The budget will also include a payment of $35.5 million for the major headquarters workforce grant. That was FY22 contingent also, and that will take us about halfway towards our obligation to Amazon. Moving on to labor on slide 29, there's $500,000 included to establish the Department of Workforce Development and Advancement and the Secretary of Labor. Moving on to agriculture and forestry on slide 31, there's $1.1 million and 15 positions for the hemp product registration and regulation consistent with legislation that was passed during the General Assembly session. There's also an additional $1.4 million related to other 2023 legislative initiatives. Moving on to natural resources on slide 33, I'd like to take a minute with this because it's a little slightly different than usual. What we needed to address in the budget included both the FY22 WQIF deposit and the FY23 WQIF deposit, because we crossed the fiscal year prior to enacting this budget. For the FY22 WQIF deposit, the entire $131 million is being deposited in the Natural Resources Commitment Fund, and that's the fund that goes for agricultural best management practices. The money goes in and then is distributed, part of it goes for technical assistance for the soil and water conservation districts. The majority goes to agriculture best management practices. From the FY23 deposit, that's $513 million, which is a significant deposit. There is, $207 million will go to the Natural Resources Commitment Fund. There's also some other earmarks for the Resilient Virginia Revolving Loan Fund of $100 million, dam safety improvements for state-owned and operated dams of $25 million, and then Stormwater Local Assistance Fund of $30 million. The majority of the funding is going to the Enhanced Nutrient Removal Certainty Program. That's the program at DEQ for sewer and water system upgrades, and that is consistent with how the funding is usually distributed. So the total Water Quality Improvement Fund deposits for the two fiscal years is $644 million. There's an additional $9.3 million provided for various non-states on slide 34. And then an additional $17, on slide 36, or 35, excuse me, there's $17 million for stormwater management in Virginia Beach. Moving on to transportation on slide 37, the major funding provided in transportation is $150 million for Interstate 64 that was included in the FY22 budget and contingent. Then there's also some various language amendments, and one thing I'd like to point out is a language amendment that deals with trails and specifies the amount there was previous funding provided for the Trails Office in VDOT, and the language dedicates specific funding to each of those trails. Are there any questions? All right, thank you.
Moving on to general government, I'm going to start with Judicial and Compensation Board, and then Mike can jump in. So the major thing in Judicial are compensation increases, and that includes 2% for district court clerks and deputy court clerks. An increase from public defender offices that'll mirror what you saw in the introduced, and that equates to about a 9% to 20% increase depending on the position. Moving to the next slide, there are compensation increases for constitutional officers and their employees. That includes sheriff's offices, and there's two components there. One is increasing salaries for sheriffs in smaller localities, and then the other component is increasing, it's a compensation adjustment for deputy sheriffs. Also under additional compensation increases, there's circuit court clerk parity, so that's to match what was provided for the district court clerks. And similarly, there's Commonwealth attorney parity to match what was provided for the public defender offices. The only other couple items I'll highlight under Compensation Board are that we restore the unfunded positions for the the unfunded positions for the Commissioner of the Revenue and the Treasury Offices, and then increase the local responsible jail per diem by $1.
So just continuing with General Government, in the Legislative Department, you can see at the top of page 39, there weren't any significant actions to note. On page, Slide 40, looking at the lower part, in the Office of Finance, the largest amount was, what April already mentioned, was the Revenue Reserve Deposit of 200, almost $290 million, which is reserved. In the executive offices, the Office of Attorney General, there were some funding for non-attorney compensation increases in the Organized Retail Crime Task Force, and then an increase in operational funding for the Lieutenant Governor's Office. And then in the Office of State Inspector General is the establishment of a Department of Corrections Ombudsman. Moving to Slide 41 and Central Appropriations, this is where the state employee and state-supported local salary increases located. You can see the 10%, 2% there, which will show up in the January 1st paychecks. There's $7.3 million for presidential primary expenses reimbursement for next year's primary, so this is the amount of funding primarily that goes to the locals to support their costs for the primary. There's $5 million for the Transformation Office and their initiatives. The only other thing I'll note is, from a language item, this is under independent agencies, the State Corporation Commission. Probably just a few weeks ago, the news was reported about the potential increase in insurance premiums in the individual market. So there's the language that directs the Bureau of Insurance to continue the reinsurance program that helps to reduce the cost of the individual market to continue that program at the current level. So most likely in the next few weeks, those rates will be updated to reflect a lower increase. If you move into Slide 42, just highlight, this slide just summarizes the changes to the ARPA allocations. There was only $15 million in Chapter 2 that was unallocated, but there were amounts available in agencies that weren't needed. So you can see about $129 million was previously allocated to ARPA funds, was reallocated in this bill. Some of it was actually used, there was about $38 million allocated in the skinny budget, so some of this reallocation had to cover those costs. And you can see here listed those items at, for $106 million that were allocated. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to Tyler for capital.
Turning to Slide 44, in capital outlay, there's an additional $211 million in general fund cash for capital. If you looked in the budget, that brings the total general fund cash for capital to $2.5 billion, which is pretty significant since there's no tax-supported debt in the budget, and we've not done any of that except for two regional gel projects. And if you look through the capital projects, you'll see a lot of things are renovation or improvements to existing buildings. There's $100 million to meet the needs of projects that are in a pool, in the supplement pool. This brings total supplements for inflationary cost of $550. There's an additional $18.6 million for maintenance reserve, and there's some specific targeted maintenance reserve to Virginia State, Norfolk State, George Mason, ODU, and UVA wise. And then if you turn to Slide 45, you'll see the 10 projects that are included in a planning pool. Most of these are improvements or renovations or replacements. There's very few construction projects of new buildings. Senator Barker, that completes capital, and we can take more questions if necessary.
All right, are there any questions that any of the members have of the staff? Senator Newman?
Mr. Chairman, it is a form of a question. April, when you look into the budget on page 720, and though a number of members have struggled with the idea that we are moving around some language as it relates to marijuana, it appears to me that this is basically taking language out of a current section and putting it into another section in general. I just want to verify for some of our members that that is the import of that change in language.
That's correct. This is language that was carried over from last year. So this is language related to marijuana possession and associated criminal penalties that was adopted in Chapter 2, and has now been incorporated into the Code of Virginia. So essentially, there is no new language in that section since what we adopted last session in Chapter 2.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions anyone has? Well, let me just sum up how we got here. We had, we have a tremendous staff in the Senate Finance and Appropriations Committee, and they certainly put a lot of effort into things over the time, over time. And we also have a situation where we had nine, that's coming. All right, we also had had a tremendous outpouring of support from within members of the Finance Committee. We had nine people who were named as conferees last winter, and even though we didn't finish the budget, and, other than the skinny budget, we had all nine participating heavily in the development of this budget proposal that we have here. Six Democrats, three Republicans. Six of us will not be here in January, but three will, so they'll have to carry things on. But we've had a tremendous effort that's been put to get us to where we, I think where we have a tremendous budget that's in place here. We dealt with a little bit of a start of a lowering of increases in terms of the revenues, but overall, we have plenty, we're in a very good position with our budget at the state level in Virginia here. So I think everybody deserves a hand of applause here, so thank you. All right, if there are, are there any other comments that anyone wishes to make on the Your motion is a little premature, so, but we will have, Senator Howell, would you like to make a motion, or comments? So, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. I was planning to make them later, but I can do them now. I'm really pleased with the budget that we have before us today. The negotiations have been very intense and very extended, but the outcome is both fair and balanced towards the priorities of both the House and the Senate. I will also say that the budget reflects bipartisan priorities in that it has additional tax relief, and it also contains unprecedented investments in education, natural resources, and behavioral health. It's a win-win for the citizens of Virginia. Your budget conferees held out for a budget that prioritized the areas I've often spoken about as chair, as promises kept. This means the bill continues to make significant investments to unwind the K-12 support cap from the Great Recession, increase teacher and state employee pay, provide funding to lower the cost of higher education in the form of both operating support and need-based aid, and provide funding in the area of mental health to help support some of our most vulnerable neighbors. The budget also includes returning some of the one-time surplus funds to the citizens of Virginia. We were focused on protecting long-term revenues by providing a one-time tax rebate. Senator Barker and I are looking to leave a structurally balanced budget for the future, and we were able to negotiate these investments while maintaining an eye on Virginia's AAA, AAA bond rating. I want to thank our dedicated conferees and the staff that have helped get us to this point today, and I hope it will be the pleasure of the committee to adopt this budget. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion that the bill will be reported. Is there a second to the motion? All right, we have a second to the motion. With the clerk, if there are no further comments, we'll, the clerk call the roll.
Senator Sazlo. Senator Norman. Senator Hanger. Senator Lucas.
Aye.
Senator Newman. Senator Ruff. Senator Vogel. Senator Edwards. Senator Deeds. Senator Locke. Senator Peterson. Senator Marsden. Senator Evan.
Aye.
Senator Howell. Senator Barker.
Aye.
Eyes 14, nose zero.
The motion passes. There being no other action needed at this time, we will adjourn the meeting.
Chair recognizes Senator Norman, the senator from James City County.
Thank you, Madam President. During this recess and expressing appreciation to the Senate Finance Committee, I would like to take advantage of this recess and respectfully request that the Senate Republican Caucus retire to their prayer meeting room for a very brief meeting.
The Senate is still in recess, just a matter of information.[1292.44]
...
The Senate will come to order. Chair calls on the senior senator from Fairfax County, Senator Sasselaw.
Madam President, there's communications from the House.
Would you like to waive the reading of the communication, sir?
I'm sorry, excuse me, yes, I would move that we waive the reading of the communications from the House.
The question is, shall the reading of the communication from the House of Delegates be waived? All those in favor of waiving the reading of the communication will record their votes aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Does any senator desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-four knows six, five.
Ayes thirty-four knows five. The reading of the communication from the House of Delegates is waived. The clerk will call the calendar. Chair calls on the senator from Northern Fairfax County, Senator Howell.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we give the privileges of the floor to the staff of the Senate Finance and Appropriations Committee.
Madam Clerk? The question is, shall the rules be suspended and grant the privileges of the floor to members of the Senate Finance and Appropriations Committee staff? All those in favor of that motion will record their votes aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Does any senator desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-nine knows zero.
Ayes thirty-nine knows zero. The rules are suspended and the privileges of the floor are granted to the members of the Senate Finance and Appropriations Committee.
Uncontested calendar Senate Bill on first reading, Senate Bill 6001, the budget bill, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
Chair recognizes Senator Howell, the senator from Northern Fairfax County.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the rules be suspended and the second constitutional reading of the title of the bill be dispensed with. of the bill be dispensed with.
Question is, shall the rules be suspended and the second constitutional reading of the title of the bill be dispensed with? Those in favor of that motion will record their votes, aye; those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Does any senator desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-six, noes three.
Ayes thirty-six, noes three. The second reading, second constitutional reading of the title of the bill will be dispensed Chair again recognizes Senator Howell.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the rules be suspended and the third constitutional reading of the title of the bill be dispensed with.
The question is, shall the rules be suspended and the third constitutional reading of the title of the bill be dispensed with? Those in favor of that motion will record their votes, aye; those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Does any senator desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-seven, noes two.
Ayes thirty-seven, noes two. The rules are suspended and the third constitutional reading of the title of the bill is dispensed with. Senator Howell.
Thank you, Madam President. And now, finally, at last, I move the bill pass.
The question is, shall... Chair recognizes Senator O'Beinshane, the gentleman from Rockingham County.
Madam President, I rise to speak to the bill.
This senator has the floor.
Madam President, members of the Senate, I find a great deal in this bill to like and some things in this bill that I choose not to like. But I want to talk about one thing in particular. I want to observe that as budgets emerged from session back in February, they emerged with significant funding for Interstate 81 improvements, general fund funding for Interstate 81. House, I think, put in, I may get this backwards, 250 million, we put in 150 million, one way or the other, but at a minimum, there was $150 million that was going to advance to accelerate the ID-1 corridor safety program improvements that are underway. And, you know, this follows the really unprecedented decision that we made last year to dedicate general fund dollars to Interstate 64 and to widen Interstate 64 between Richmond and Williamsburg for speeding those vacationers on their way to Virginia Beach or on their way to the Outer Banks. I want to tell you that Interstate 81, we have problems that are different from Interstate 64. Interstate 64, you know, I know, my family's from the eastern shore. When we go to the eastern shore, you know, if conditions are perfect, it takes me four hours to get there, but they're almost never perfect. On most days, it takes me somewhere around five to six and a half hours to traverse that section of the interstate. So I get it, I get the inconvenience that's caused to travelers who travel that stretch of the road. But on Interstate 81, it's not just a matter of convenience, it's a matter of survival. And I want to relate to you two experiences of mine. One was a few years ago, in which I was traveling south on Interstate 60, or Interstate 81. It was in Augusta County, and as I was traveling in the right-hand lane, traveling at a lawful speed, I will mind you, a tractor trailer coming down the left lane chose to pull over into the right lane, unbeknownst to me. I didn't see it coming, it clipped the left rear quarter panel of my car, spun us sideways, and every window in the car burst in, and I was looking to my left at the grille of a tractor trailer that is pushing us sideways down Interstate 81. Thank God, we spun out on the other side instead of going underneath that tractor trailer. But when we spun out on the other side, what I saw was traffic coming at me, going 75 miles an hour down the interstate, and we continued to spin, and thank God, we landed in the median strip on 81, and both my wife and I and our dog were fine, were fine, a little bit bruised. I had to chase my dog up Interstate 81 to catch her, but I caught her. Now, I survived that in pretty good order. This past Wednesday, a week ago today, I was on my way to Charlottesville, driving down Interstate 81 on a normal Wednesday morning, 9:30 in the morning, traffic is heavy, it is moving at about 75 miles an hour in both lanes, both lanes are full. And I had a, I don't know, a Mercury SUV in front of me, and I couldn't see around it, couldn't see what was in front of it, and as we're driving south, that SUV suddenly veered to the right, and in front of me is a SUV coming north in the left, southbound lane of Interstate 81, traveling full speed in the opposite direction, right in front of me. I had no time to do anything except steer to the right and just hope that that tractor trailer that had been there had somehow miraculously moved over, and it did. And that car zoomed by me, full speed, and I looked in my rearview mirror and thought, my God, somebody is going to die up the interstate, and I didn't see anything. And the next morning, on Thursday morning, I had VDOT in my office, just for their regular briefing on, you know, what's going on in my district, and I told them about that experience, and they said, oh my God, I didn't hear anything about it. I said, surely, there was an accident. And they called me later that day and said, indeed, there was, but thank God, it was that vehicle clipping a tractor trailer and going off into the median strip. State troopers arrived, and the driver of that vehicle had to be, was a woman, had to be wrestled to the ground, she was mentally ill, and she told the state police she was trying to kill herself, and apparently anybody who was in her way. But, you know, I'm telling you, I have survived cancer. I've survived two life-threatening incidents on Interstate 81, and I will tell you, I think my odds of surviving cancer are a hell of a lot better than surviving another wreck on Interstate 81, or another close encounter on Interstate 81. That's just my experience. Everybody who drives on Interstate 81 can tell you their own stories. They have either been in a crash, or have witnessed a crash, or know somebody who has died or been seriously injured on that road. Now, we have talked about improving Interstate 81, and I don't know where that money went. I don't know why it disappeared, whether it was a tug-of-war between people south and people north, but that's why we passed the Interstate 81 Improvement Program. They, VDOT, was going to decide where these funds need to be spent in order to save people's lives. You know, I get the problems on 64. I'm glad that that widening project is going on, I'm glad that that $165 million is in the budget this year to continue that project. I am sorely disappointed and very upset, and will share the disappointment of my constituents that that money to advance and accelerate the safety improvements on Interstate 81 have disappeared and have been pulled out of this budget. So, Madam President, thank you.
Chair recognizes Senator Sorrell, the senator from Eastern Fairfax County.
Good afternoon, Madam President.
Good afternoon.
Madam President, I am abstaining pursuant to Rule 36 on item 374, but voting on SB 6001 as a whole.
I thank the senator. Chair recognizes Senator Morrissey, the senior senator from Petersburg.
Thank you, Madam President, and good afternoon to you.
Good afternoon.
Would the gentlelady from Northern Fairfax County, the chairman of the Senate Finance, yield for a question?
Will Senator Howell stand and yield for a question?
Yes, I yield.
Senator yields. Senator Morrissey has the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask the gentlelady, I thought that there was a, speaking of capital projects, $100 million that was going to be allocated for combined sewer overflow to benefit the city of Richmond, which is in dire need of it, and then, at the last moment, it seems like it was pulled out. Can the senator explain to the body why that money was removed from the budget?
Senator Howell has the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would respond to the gentleman that it is not in, we did not have enough resources to fund that, but it could be put easily in the caboose bill by the governor.
I thank the gentlelady. Madam President, speaking to the measure.
Senator Morrissey may continue.
Madam President, since I was five, and on the Wycomica River, actually the Lower Wycomica River, I've enjoyed water sports, and I've continued the tradition with my children, and just this past Sunday and Monday, on Labor Day, I was on the James with my kids, and we were tubing and skiing, and I was thinking to myself, how lucky are we, because the James River is getting cleaner? And we were driving, not a lot of traffic there, maybe because it was so hot, but beautiful scenery, and the tree line, as you're going towards the city of Richmond, was just gorgeous, and I was really thankful that we have, over the last several years, put money into CSO. And I'll give credit where credit is due, the gentleman from, Senator from the Prince, I'll get it right, excuse me, only... From King George, I'm sorry, has spent a long time promoting this, putting money into CSO to make our waterways pristine and pure, and we have a problem in Richmond, and that is this, ladies and gentlemen, when there is a huge rainstorm, the water capacity for treating that water, you can't handle it. You just, so you turn off the switch, and the raw sewage goes right into the James River. My colleague from Northern Virginia, Senator Sorrell, said it best, and he wasn't being cheeky when he said this, he said, you have a big storm, and you flush the toilet, think of that raw sewage as going into the James River, and he is absolutely correct. We've put $400 million into it, we need a billion, there was 100 million, there was earmarked towards it. I can't think anything, any capital project, ladies and gentlemen, that is more important for ourselves, our children, our grandchildren, than to keep our iconic rivers in Chesapeake Bay clean and pure, and I'm hoping that in the future, that we can get that money put back into the budget so that we can repair, and we need another probably half a billion to get it done, to get the combined sewage overflow under control. Thank you for your time, Madam President.
Chair recognizes Senator Stanley, Senator from Franklin County.
Thank you, Madam President, I speak to SB 6001.
The senator may continue.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I just want to make sure that others join me, I'm never asking Mark O'Beinshane for a ride ever again on any highway in the western part of the state. And I'm glad only Senator Steve Martin became an Uber driver and not Senator O'Beinshane. Be the ride of your life. I mean, whoo. I tried to give him one of my law cards, but, you know, he says he was okay. Anyway, Madam President, all jokes aside, I do want to thank those that have worked so hard on this budget, as was said earlier by the great driver, Senator O'Beinshane. There are some good things and some bad things in this bill. There are some things we probably would have wanted, and there's some things that we wouldn't. I think tax relief should have been permanent for our residents and more meaningful. Certainly, I like the increases for mental health, we're dealing with a crisis, so, and I want to thank the senator from Bath, who has always been a warrior in that regard. There are those things that you like, and there are things that you don't like, but one thing that I don't like, and I'm going to explain what I'm about to do, is because I think it necessary, and here I am, standing for the second time, Madam Clerk, as I now move into the single-digit role of seniority in this body, that process matters. Traditions matter, protocol matters. So, Madam Clerk, 13 sessions later, you were right, and the preservation of those things matter, and it matters not only in the way that we deliberate, but also in what we do and how we do it, that we keep to certain traditions and protocols because they are, in fact, important, as Madam Clerk has tried to drill into my head and others over the course of time. He was right, Madam Clerk was right. Senator Sasslaw was right. Funny, but right. But what we're doing here in this budget, and this is why I'm going to stand and make my statement and take my stand here, is that we're doing something that is also very dangerous, and it happened last year, and I was not here because I had the COVID for the conference report, which was voted up or down, and I would have done what I'm going to do now. But what we did last year, which I think is such a dangerous thing, and I see it again once we've opened the door, once we put it in ink, it becomes in stone, as someone respectfully disagreed with me today, is that we are legislating through the budget. Bills that have not passed are suddenly inserted. Bills that were rejected by this body, either by committee or on this floor, are somehow survived and revived in this budget and become the code of Virginia. Go around the process that we've established for how we do legislation and propose bills in this body and the one across the hall, that we propose, we introduce, we allow public consumption, public debate, we debate in committees, if it makes it at committees, it makes it to the floor, and then we debate it again, and then we're voting on it up or down, if it passes, it goes over there, the whole process, we all know. I was told two things when I came to this body many years ago now, it turns out. One was never introduce a dog or a cat bill. I completely didn't listen to that one. But quite frankly, with my friend, Senator Boiskow, we've been able to save, and your all's vote, over 5,000 beagles, of which one is in the ownership of my good friend, the senator from Bath, who he loves very much. But at the same time, the second thing that I was told was don't legislate through the It obviates the process. It's not fair, it's not right. Things that die should die and should not be resurrected in a budget, nor should we just come up with whole cloth pieces of legislation that were never considered by the public, never considered in committee, never argued on the floor, not allowed to be amended, not allowed to take its natural course through the bicameral system that we have. On page 718, that is one piece of evidence, there are two instances where last year, we legislated through the budget. And one of those items, I'm involved in litigation, is currently pending, and I thought, the other thing, I think I remember Senator John Watkins said, was we don't mess with anything that's pending litigation. Well, we did. We did on page 718, and it affected thousands of small business owners throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia, altered the course of the litigation. That still continues to this day. And I'm, oh, I was told to be feeling better that we didn't do anything to it this year. Well, we shouldn't have done it in the first place. Let us all not, from this day forward, who remains after those who retire and the news come in, use the budget to create legislation that either has failed in this body or was never introduced through the regular order? And for those reasons, because of my involvement, as you've seen in prior votes before, I'm not going to yellow-sheet something, I'm going to R36 this budget, I'm going to abstain because I don't think it's right and it has an effect on one of my clients in pending litigation. Thank you, Madam President.
Chair recognizes Senator Favola, the senator from Arlington.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I rise to speak.
Madam President, I rise to speak in favor of the budget.
The senator may say on.
Okay. As everyone has said before me, there are things in this budget to like, and there, of course, there are things that we may not like, we may not embrace. But this is a compromise document, and that is the definition of a compromise, give and take. I think on big picture items, the budget that we had adopted early on from the Senate, or actually, the budget we adopted in the last session, is really reflected in this budget that we have before us in many ways. I compliment the conferees for giving us a structurally balanced budget. We are much better off with a one-time rebate and maybe standard deductions. I wouldn't have been excited about this, I'm not excited about how high the standard deductions have gone. But in retrospect, that's a better option than deep, ongoing tax relief, because then money leaves you. I mean, if you're using it with ongoing dollars, those tax cuts continue and continue. So if your economy doesn't grow, you're compromising your ability to fund core services in the future. So in a big picture way, this is a very good budget. And if you're conservative in the way you manage money, you should like this budget. This actually honors some budget principles. Getting beyond that and going through some of, peeling back the onion, I am most excited about what we're doing for our teachers in Virginia. If you look at, over time, our biennial budget last year gave a 5% increase over two years with state dollars, enough state dollars to fund that, and this gives an additional 2%. So that brings our teacher pay, when jurisdictions put their matching dollars down on the table, it brings our teacher pay, an increase of 12%. This is a good thing. We want our public schools to thrive. We want our students to have the best teachers, and we're having a challenge right now, attracting teachers and retaining them. This was a smart move. I also really like the direct aid flexible funding that's based on a per pupil count, but it's a lot of flexibility with priority on our literacy efforts. And that had strong bipartisan support. I was in those public hearings when lawmakers on both sides of the aisle said, we have to ensure that our children are reading by grade three. We also have to help make up for learning loss. And this flexibility and the way these dollars will be sent to our school systems will enable that to happen. This is outcome-based, and this is trying to address a problem that has broad bipartisan support. I'm really excited about the behavioral health dollars, $58 million going to support crisis stabilization centers and crisis receiving centers. This is a good thing. We're going to use these centers to divert individuals from going to our emergency rooms where they're in crises. We also have some dollars that will help with alternative transportation, an issue I worked on and many others worked on. We want to help our law enforcement so they're not tied up taking individuals under a T D O to a hospital emergency room and then waiting until a bed is available. Perhaps there's another way we can do that. Perhaps we can hire an alternative transportation system that can help in that measure. The one minor thing that I have to point out, because I work extensively in the emergency room settings, sometimes I'm a little disappointed that we didn't have more language that fully described what would be expected under the alternative emergency room usage language. Has, unfortunately, a few years, a few months back, there was an effort by D Mass and guided by the General Assembly, where there was actually decoding of some of our utilization categories. There was a lawsuit, and that was ruled, you know, inappropriate or not applicable. So I would suggest that going forward, that D Mass actually look at strategies that will reduce emergency room utilization, rather than just trying to figure out another way around the language that the court gave us. I mean, there are some great ways. If we could expand somewhat the reimbursement for primary care practitioners, perhaps our Medicaid patients would be able to find a medical home, and that would really help divert emergency room usage. We can also more robustly fund our coordinated care processes, so when an individual does go into an emergency room, our doctors and our caseworkers can work at getting that individual a more permanent and probably ongoing primary care home. So there are some areas that we can do better in emergency room utilization, and I hope that as we flesh this out, D Mass does have time to develop something and to have to go forward probably to get CMS approval if we're going to change our Medicaid plan. We can put a lot of thought into actually reducing emergency room usage. Other than that, I don't have a lot to complain about. And I, again, compliment the conferees. This is a good budget, it's a sound budget. I think we want to get our dollars allocated. The problems that this budget solved are real, and this will be a big impact on people's lives. I think we'll serve Virginians well by voting for this budget. Thank you, Madam President.
Chair recognizes now Senator Peterson, the senator from Fairfax City.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be very brief, just say that I am abstaining pursuant to Rule 36 on item 106, and also on item 6, because I do have clients with pending litigation, which I intend on winning. But otherwise, I'll be voting on the bill as a whole.
Chair now recognizes Senator Newman, the senator from Bedford.
Speaking to the bill.
The senator has the floor.
Madam President, I did not plan to speak. I did want to kind of share a number of the reasons why I think this is a very good budget. I know that most of the members on the Republican side and most of the members on the Democrat side are planning to vote for this bill. But I want to give you a number of the reasons why I think that the co-chairs and the conference committee came together on a good budget. The first one is, this is probably as fiscally responsible bill as I've ever seen. You look at the one-time spending, since we're going in a time of uncertainty, I've never seen anything like $3.7 billion, $3.7 billion in one-time spending. That's responsible. We don't know what's around the corner, so those of you that will be left, I think we're leaving you in a proper place, a place where you'll have the ability to make decisions about your priorities as the economy gets better. Number two, if you look at this budget and look at the pay increases, not only for teachers, which I think was a good, good point on there, but if you care about law enforcement, we have funded the pay increases for law enforcement. And Senator from Portsmouth and I have always caring deeply, and Senator Hampton, about 599 Monday, so often, we've done something for the sheriffs and left the police officers in the balance and nothing there, right? This time, we've done something about that. And when it comes to tax cuts, this is substantial. Not only is it the one-time, which is a lot of one-time spending, but there is some one-time spending for tax cuts. There's some permanency here, too, to items that we all care about. When you look at the standard deduction, that's something that helps the working poor in Virginia. Once again, we've increased the standard deduction for the people of Virginia who can least afford to pay some of those taxes. Number two is, we've gone in and said, if you are a retiree, a veteran retiree, we're going to take the age limits off. That's a permanent change that we're making in this budget. And we should have never, even during recessions or otherwise, removed some of the interest deductions that we put into the budget years ago, and this bill goes a long way to undoing that work. Also very grateful for the work from people down the hall and from the governor's office on mental health. Mental health is a major issue that's getting bigger. You're seeing it everywhere. The senator from Bath and others have worked so hard on this. But to be very clear, we've done things maybe a little bit more of the Senate way, as opposed to maybe some of the House way, but in this case, we are actually putting that money in that the governor has asked for, that we have demanded. There are more of the waiver slots that we are leaning into with this budget. I believe that it's very important that we leave you with the crisis receiving centers. We are getting one in central Virginia. Our law enforcement is delighted they're going to allow them to get back on the streets and actually do the work that they need to do. This budget is one that I imagine that if you looked long enough, you may find some things you don't agree with, but by and large, I believe the co-chairs and the other members that were part of the negotiating team came up with a very, very good budget, one that is fiscally sound and conservative, that deals with spending issues that the Senate cared a lot about, and the tax relief that the governor and the House of Delegates looked at. So I look at this budget as a very positive budget, and I appreciate the colleagues that helped put it together.
Chair now recognizes Senator Distef, the senior senator from Virginia Beach.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I'm abstaining pursuant to Rule 36 on item 106, page 99, line 115 through 24. I'm also abstaining on enactment number 13, page 718, lines 1 through 50, and page 719, lines 1 through 22. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Chair recognizes Senator McDougal, the senator from Hanover.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I rise to announce that I'm voting on the budget as a whole, but I'm abstaining pursuant to Rule 36 on item number 206, item number 4-14.00, number 13 and 29.
Chair now recognizes Senator Lucas, the senator from Portsmouth.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I am abstaining pursuant to Rule 36 on items number 104, item 304, item 308, and item 397, but voting on the bill as a whole. Thank you, Madam President.
The question is, shall Senate Bill 6001 pass? All those in favor of that motion will record their votes, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Does any senator desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 38, no, zero, Rule 36, one.
Ayes, 38, no, zero, Rule 36, one. The bill passes.
Commending resolutions.
Chair calls on the senior senator from Fairfax County, Senator Sasso.
Madam President, I move that the commending resolutions on pages 1 and 2, that's SR 602 through 605, be considered and blocked by voice vote, waiving the reading of the resolutions with the understanding that any senator may, any senator may desire to remove a resolution, from the block will do so after the clerk has read the number of the resolution.
The question is, shall the commending resolutions on pages 1 and 2, Senate Resolutions 602 through 605, be considered in the block by voice vote, waiving the reading of the resolutions with the understanding that any senator desiring to remove a resolution from the block will do so after the clerk has read the number of the resolution? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion is agreed to, the resolutions are before us in the block. The clerk will now read the numbers of the resolution.
Senate Resolutions 602, 603, 604, 605.
The question is, shall the resolutions be agreed to? All in favor of agreeing to the resolutions will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolutions are agreed to. The Senate will be at ease temporarily.
In the absence of our leader on the floor, I am serving as a surrogate, and I respectfully request that we stand in recess for 15 minutes.
The Senate will be at recess for 15 minutes.
The Senate Committee on Finance will meet, the Senate Committee on Finance will meet at the chair, co-chair's desk.
The Senate will come to order. The clerk will call the calendar.
Mental calendar, number one. Uncontested calendar, House Bill on second reading, House Bill 6001, appropriations act. Reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
Chair calls on Senator Howell. The senator from Northern Fairfax County.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we suspend the rules and dispense with the third constitutional reading.
The question is, shall the rules be suspended and the third constitutional reading be dispensed with on House Bill 6001? All those in favor of that motion will record their votes. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Does any senator desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Aye's thirty-four knows three.
Aye's thirty-four knows three. The rules are suspended and the third constitutional reading is dispensed with. Senator Howell.
Thank you, Madam President. I would remind the body that this bill is identical to the Senate bill that we passed just a few minutes ago, and with that, I would move that we pass the bill.
Question is, shall the bill pass? Those in favor of the motion will record their votes. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Does any senator desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Aye's thirty-eight knows zero, Rule 36-1.
Aye's thirty-eight knows zero, Rule 36-1. House Bill 6001 passes.
Commending resolution. Senate Resolution 606 commending the Virginia Polytechnic Institute and State University Women's Basketball Team.
Chair calls on the junior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Rouse.
Thank you, Madam President. I move the commending bill be, or the resolution be agreed to. Go Hokies.
The question is, shall Senate Resolution 606 be agreed to? Those in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Senate Resolution 606 is agreed to.
Senate Resolution 607 commending Kenneth Perry.
Chair recognizes Senator Dunavant, the senator from Hinrico.
Thank you, Madam President. I move the resolution be agreed to.
The question is, shall Senate Resolution 607 be agreed to? Those in favor will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is agreed to. Is there any other business to come before this esteemed body? Senator Howell.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand on a point of personal privilege.
The senator may continue.
Thank you. Thirty-two years ago, sounds like a long time, but my years in the Senate have flown by, and I'm filled lately with memories and gratitude. So many memories. When I was first elected, I was called the miracle senator because Democrats had suffered historic losses that year, and I was a Democrat in a Republican-leaning district. I was definitely a long shot. Also, very few women had ever served in the Senate. Senator Lucas and I were the sixth and seventh ever. So my first day on the Senate floor, I was excited and also terrified. Historic figures like Hunter Andrews, John Chisholm, and Joe Gartland were in charge. The procedures and rules and traditions were complex and confusing, and frankly, they still are. Because of our rarity, we women really stood out. Ayes were watching us. We couldn't fail, so I was very anxious. But I'm also filled with so much gratitude. So many people have guided and supported me, and I want to mention them at least by category. First, the voters of the 32nd District. Without them, I never would have been here in the first place. My family, especially my husband Hunt, who has supported me in every way for almost sixty years. My staff, including the interns. I'm especially grateful to Carol Straub, who for ten years has been my devoted chief of staff. Members like Ken Plum and Dick Sazlo, who taught me the ropes even after I already knew them. Madam Clerk and her staff, who make us all look like competent people even when we're flailing and need a lot of assistance, and who also improve and protect the Senate and our procedures. The Senate Finance and Appropriations Committee staff, under the direction of April Keys. They craft our complex budget and give us their expertise on state programs. They are absolutely the best. Legislative services, who take our vague ideas and create something that makes legal sense. Capitol Police, who keep us safe. And there are a couple of groups who probably don't know how much I respect them and who are misunderstood by so many. First, the lobbyists. They provide information and suggest solutions. I've had a rule my whole time in the Senate that any lobbyist who lies to me or misrepresents will never come into my office again. In all those thirty-two years, only one has met that fate. And second, the press. These three decades have been very challenging for the press. I've dealt with hundreds of reporters from print, TV, and radio covering all parts of the state and areas of public policy. I have known them to be overwhelmingly professional and eager to get the story right. You can't ask for much more. And finally, I want to recognize all the senators I've served with. We come from very different backgrounds and regions. There are reasons some of us are Democrats and some of us are Republicans, but here in the Senate, we treat each other with respect and because we all got here the same way. We got more votes than anybody else in the race. So it's my fervent wish that this mutual respect and admiration and decorum continues forever. When I was first elected, I was asked how long I would run. I said as long as I still got goosebumps when I entered the Senate floor. Well, I still do get goosebumps, but the time has definitely come for new leadership, and I can't wait to watch to see what you all do. Thank you, Madam President.
We thank the senator for her many years of service. Chair recognizes Senator Cosgrove, the senior senator from Chesapeake.
Thank you, Madam President. Point of personal privilege.
The senator has the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Ladies and gentlemen, it has been an honor and a privilege to serve in this body with all of you. I'm leaving, Dick's leaving, Janice leaving, Tommy's leaving, Steve's leaving, gosh, everybody's leaving, you know? So it's going to be a very, very different place next session. But I want to echo what the senator from Fairfax City just said. Folks, be kind to each other. Respect each other. It's going to be really easy to become hyper partisan in this body, and I hope that everyone will still consider all of the members here friends. And a couple of people I just briefly want to thank, I want to thank Tommy Norman. He has been a mentor, he's been a friend, he's been just wonderful. He's been with me in good times and bad times, and I want to thank him personally. Dick Sazlo, he represents where I grew up. I used to go to his gas station. I've really enjoyed serving with you, Dick. Somebody else that I'm going to mention, you might surprise you, is Senator Favola. Senator Favola has always been such a lovely lady, not just a senator, but a lovely person. Even when she's in the committee chair and we disagree, she's just delightful. And also, one of my best friends here, Senator D. Steph. I'm going to miss him like crazy. So please, everyone, just be kind to each other and, you know, love each other. That's what we really need to do. God bless all of you. Thank you.
We thank the senator with whom I was elected twenty-two years ago. Chair recognizes Senator Barker, the senator from Southern Fairfax County.
Thank you for a point of personal privilege.
The senator has the floor.
I'm one of the many senators who will not be back here in January. I will miss this job and each of you. I have had a privileged life. I had a humble beginning, but I had some wonderful role models, starting with my father, a Presbyterian minister who worked on civil rights in Knoxville, Tennessee in the 1960s. In my health planning job in Northern Virginia, I worked with the agency director to restructure hospital and healthcare systems to gain efficiency, control costs, and provide needed access. And before I was elected to the Senate, I worked with Senator Joe Gartland on many health and human resource issues. I have felt a calling to elective public service to help Virginia and Virginians. I have thoroughly enjoyed my work as a senator. As you know, I do not limit myself to only a handful of issues, but have been very busy addressing issues such as social services, women's rights and health decisions, healthcare, dental coverage, mental health, transportation, education from pre-K through higher ed, our economy and economic development, the environment and climate change, gun violence prevention, retail theft, local governments, quality of life, our budget, and protecting our resources that maintain our status as the only state in the country that has had a AAA bond rating ever since states began being rated in the 1930s. I now am co-chair of the Finance and Appropriations Committee and have served often as chair on many subcommittees, commissions, workgroups, and other bodies. I've gotten a myriad of bills and budget items passed, but also have helped defeat some measures in committees or on the floor. This year, I led the action in an education and health subcommittee I chair, where we defeated five bills that would have placed limitations on abortions in Virginia. Our actions speak for themselves, and our budget is reflective of our values. I also have had robust constituent services. That includes dealing with unemployment payments during the pandemic. Not easy. I am particularly proud of a constituent who was a college student and a member of the Virginia National Guard. When he found out that the North Carolina Guard was going to serve in Iraq, he transferred to that guard, only to find out after his tour that he was denied in-state tuition because he was deemed to be a resident of North Carolina even though he had never lived there. It took some work, but we got him in-state tuition so he could continue his education. I am happy to have served in the Senate with you. I think we have been a strong team who have worked together very well, as shown in development of our budgets today. We have helped Virginians who need assistance. We know how to work and must work across political differences. I know that those who are here now are in the Senate for the right reasons, not just for themselves. I have always told the truth and trust that all of you will continue doing the same. We do this job selflessly. I also trust our excellent staff and those who lobby us as well as our legislative aides. I've had some very good ones. They make us look and do better. We also know that our families are affected by the demands on us. I know my wife Jane, whom many of you know, has been my strongest supporter and worked very hard on my races. She has helped me win several close races. I cannot thank her and our family enough, and I know that many of you feel the same about your families. about your families. Democracy is not always easy. I do have some trepidation with the amount of turnover in the Senate. I fear that you will have senators who are not prepared for this job and what it requires. I hope that they will be knowledgeable and will come to their own decisions rather than just relying on those who have funded their campaigns, particularly those who have as much as more than 80% of their funds for their elections being from one source. I hope that you will address campaign finance reform, equitable tax shares, and the need for increasing funding for many needs that are not adequately helping the needy be able to participate fully in life, such as those who have developmental disabilities or mental health problems. My experience in the Senate has been great. I've had the privilege and honor of being a member of this body. I won't be here in January, but you can count on me to continue working and fighting the good fight to make Virginia better and Virginians better off. As many of you can see, as I run the streets and parks of Richmond, I still have lots of energy. I was pretty quick this morning, and I'm faster now than I have been since my heart surgery to correct a birth defect four years ago. And you can count on me to continue using that energy for good. I lost an election, but I look at that from the perspective of a quote from Congressman John Lewis, quote, "Do not get lost in a sea of despair. Be hopeful, be optimistic, never ever be afraid to make some noise and get in good trouble, necessary trouble." My best to all of you. I will miss you.
Is there any other business to come before the Senate? Hearing them, the clerk will report any announcements on the desk.
We do not have any announcements, Madam President.
Well then, the chair calls on the senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I move that the Senate do now adjourn pursuant to HJR 6001 until reconvened with at least 48 hours' notice by the call of the chair of Senate Committee on Rules.
The question is, shall the Senate adjourn pursuant to HJR 6001? Chair again calls on Senator Lucas to restate the adjournment motion.
Madam President, Senator Tim Kaine told me earlier this week that I know how to follow instructions, I just choose not to. That's not the case today. I'm following instructions as they were given to me, but I will restate.
If the senator will suspend for just a second, and Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson, the chair now recognizes.
Madam President, I have to speak on a point of personal privilege.
The senator may continue.
All right. Madam President, thank you. I'm going to conclude that that was Deus ex machina, because actually, Deeds reached over and pushed my request to speak. I had no intention to speak. But y'all are going to make me do it one last time, I'll do it. This will be my last day here, and I've spent 16 years, and it's been a great honor. And I want to begin by thanking you all for being kind and hospitable to me. I want to thank particularly my leadership, Dick Sazlaw and Mamie Locke, who have had my back every step of the way. And I don't forget that. I'll never forget that. And Louise, and Scott, and so many of you, and even folks I just met, Lamont. I'll never forget our moments together. But I also want to thank someone, the senior senator from Chesapeake, Senator Spruill. I used to crash on his couch years ago when I was running for statewide office 20 years ago. And I just, I remember small things like that. That's what I remember. I also want to thank my chief of staff, Kathy Nielsen. She was sort of the, you know, the Cub Scout mother that kept us for almost two decades, held things together. I love Kathy very much. My political director, Tanya Hussain. I also want to really thank the one person that made this all possible, and I hearken back to a winter's night many, many years ago when I was visiting my new in-laws at their home in Ohio, and we got a phone call from my cousin, or actually, my cousin's wife, Tati Puller, that told me that there was a vacancy because there had been a death in central Fairfax, and there was a House of Delegates seat open, and I needed to get back to Fairfax that, the next morning to file. And we had to actually leave this dinner, which had been organized for me, the new son-in-law, and we just up and left. And because we had to get back to Fairfax by 8:00 in the morning. And my new wife was furious at me, and I said, just give me this one chance to run for office. Just one chance, just one, and I'll never bother you with it again. That was 1996. And so I want to thank my wife, Sharon, for making this all possible. She has been the inspiration of my life and obviously the mother of our children. And I'll just conclude by saying this, there's been a lot of kind things said, and I will agree with all of them. You know, I have a motto for our family, and I said this to my, I say this to my children all the time. I said it to my son whenever he'd go on the football field or on the wrestling mat, and that was Peterson tough. And Peterson tough doesn't mean you're always right, but means you're never afraid. And that's kind of what I would like for people to think of me, is just being Peterson tough. Whether or not I was correct, I always was never afraid. So anyways, I want to thank you guys again. It's been wonderful. If you need an attorney, call me, by the way. And I'll see you on the other side. God bless you.
I came in with you 22 years ago as the largest class in the other house. Chair calls on Senator Peak, the senator from Lynchburg.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Senator has the floor.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. Forget it, I'm not leaving. Never mind. I know all y'all people are giving your own speeches over there. Since we did not give these speeches when we left, and I think it's appropriate that we comment on a few of our folks who are leaving, first, all the ones who are leaving. At my time here, everyone leaves an impression that we meet with their expertise in various fields, their knowledge, and what y'all have shared with us. And so I appreciate that for everyone who is retiring, who is going away. The very first thing I noticed when I came here was how pleasant everyone was and what an honor it was to work with you. So those who are going, we will miss you. I will miss you personally. There's one who is going that I am especially glad is going. And so I thought I would take a moment. I would take you back to, and this is since we got put in the same district, I'm not mentioning any names, but 2009, 2009, the British Open. Let's go to Scotland. Tom Watson, one of the most revered golfers of all times, a true gentleman. Everyone in the sport respected him, that he was loved by the fans, everyone involved. One putt to win the British Open, which would have made him the oldest person to have ever won the British Open, or a major at that time. He'd won it four times. They loved him in Britain. One putt, and there was a no-name golfer who needed him to miss that putt. And he did miss that putt. And Stuart Sink, who has not done much since then, said, "I knew in my heart that I was the only person in the entire world that was hoping he would miss that putt. Not even my wife wanted him to miss that putt." And I bring that back to this spring. I was the only person in the Commonwealth of Virginia who was hoping Steve Newman would say, "It's time to retire." And I am still the only one in the Commonwealth of Virginia who thinks it's a great, great decision that the senator from Bedford has made to retire at a time when he can still spend time with his grandchildren and his lovely wife, Kim, who is here, who comes here so frequently. We will miss the senator from Bedford. Central Virginia will miss him. The Commonwealth will miss him. The governor's going to miss him, and y'all are going to miss him. But you get me. You get me? And I, I think, think about the coach that replaced Bear Bryant, the coach that replaced John Wooden. Exactly nobody has any idea who those two people were. Senator Newman, thank you for everything you've done, just in this budget alone, what you've done for Central Virginia. Thank you for your commitment from the time before his children were born up until now he has his first grandchild, your dedication to the Commonwealth. And we will all miss you. Everybody else will miss you more than me. I appreciate what you have done for us, and enjoy time with Kim and your two children and your grandchild, Brooks. Thank you.
Chair recognizes the senator from Bedford.
We had a pact that none of us were going to talk, and Mark Peak screwed it up again.
The senator has the floor.
Madam President, I guess I will say just a couple of things. One, I love a lot of you guys. I love the Senate of Virginia, and thank you for what you've meant to me. You know, a lot of times I've looked back on the time I've spent, especially this year, on how you'll be remembered. And a couple of things. One, I hope, I hope that I will be remembered as someone who was kind to you and was respectful of you. And if ever I was, I think it was hopefully a reflection of my faith. If ever I was hubris or unkind, that was all me. But I am very grateful. I'm very grateful to the clerk. We've been together for so long. I tell everyone that I love Louise, Lucas, and my wife knows it, and it's true. Senator Locke, it's been such a pleasure to get to know you. Even Senator Sazlaw, people in my district have no idea why I'm friends with Senator Sazlaw. But Senator Sazlaw, I've said many times on the radio to their befuddlement that if he needed help tomorrow, I'd leave and go join him. And Senator Howell and I have said to each other many times, how in the world are we friends, right? Haven't we? She is as liberal as I am conservative, and we are the most unlikely friends. As a matter of fact, she told me not long back that when she first got here, she didn't like me. And I understood that, and now she does. So to all of you, thank you for your endless kindness. There's nothing like retiring to someone older than you are. And the last, the last thing I'll say is to my seatmates, thank you. Senator Norman has been a dear friend. He didn't like me much when I got here either. When I first got, this is a true story, when I first got here, some of us, Mark and some of us, went down to the caucus, and they said, "You're not allowed in here." We said, "What?" They said, "Yeah, you and Cuccinelli and somebody else aren't allowed in there." And then one time, we got an email saying we could come and show up. We went in, and they said, "Sorry, that was a mistake. You got to leave." But I'm very grateful for your friendship. I've become a dear friend with you as well, and so many more of you. To the Senate Finance staff, thank you. You've taught me so much, and I'm so grateful. So thank you. You love the Commonwealth of Virginia, and these budgets reflect that. And the last is to Sarah in my office. She's just extraordinary, and I think she'll be with the older guy from Lynchburg next year. But most importantly, to my wife, Kim. We've been married a long time. We're getting closer to 30 years. When I first got here, I was no children, no wife, and I had no gray hair. Imagine that. So all that's happened. But Kim, you have just been so helpful and inspirational. And to Tyler and Wesley and that little Brooks, which draws me out of the Senate and to maybe a better life with my family. Thank you all for your kindness. We really enjoy being a part of the Senate of Virginia.
Chair recognizes Senator Locke, the senator from Hampton.
Thank you, Madam President. It certainly was not my intent to say anything, but it is rare that words of wisdom emanate from the mouth of the senator from James City County. But, but he, we were having a conversation in the back room once, and he said, you know, it's hard to speak ill of someone or to call someone, and I'm not going to use the word that he used, a bad name if you get to know that person and you break bread together. And that we had gotten away from that here in the Senate of Virginia. And I want to tell a really short story that when we got here on the floor, Senator Cosgrove reminded, he asked me a question about my niece, whom he knows, and he got to know on a trip to France when she was seven. And he asked how she was doing. I said, "Oh, she's getting ready to graduate." And he said, "Graduate from where?" I said, "She's getting ready to graduate from college." And I said, "That dates you, doesn't it?" And so, and because of that trip, when he got to know her as a seven-year-old, when she wanted to apply for the PAGE program, he was one of the people who wrote her letter of recommendation. And it was those kinds of relationships that we've been able to build over the years. And I agree with the senator from James City County, Tommy, whom I've known, you know, for many, many years and who I do consider a friend, that I think is very important to us here in the Senate, and that I hope that we can continue to build those kinds of relationships as friends and as colleagues. And it should not be about the partisanship, that it should be about relationships and friendships here. And I will miss all of you who are leaving. Janet, you know, our relationship is about Oberlin College and Tugloo College. And I hope that those of you who are leaving will certainly not just go away and dismiss us here, and remember us here, and continue to do your good work in your communities. And I love all of you, and will miss all of you dearly.
Thank the senator. And now, again, the senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Thank you, Madam President. I think I'll stand up to the statement that was made by Senator Tim Kaine. I know how to follow instructions, but oftentimes I choose not to. I will be missing everybody who will be retiring from this body, especially Janet Howell, whom I, she and I came in together. And we had a lot of good times together, but you know, just like sisters, we would fight like cats and dogs, but nothing could ever separate us. And at times, we would even call ourselves twin sisters. We went on a trip one time, and we played tricks on some of the vendors. We would leave our bags, and I would tell them, "When my twin sister comes back, tell her to stay here with my bags." She would leave her things, and she would tell the vendor, "When my twin sister comes back..." back, tell her to stay here with my bags." Well, when Janet showed up, she said, "Did you see my sister?" And the man said, "No, I didn't see anybody look like you." She said, "There she is right there." And the man's like, "Oh, you have got to be kidding me." But it can happen. But one of the people that I will miss the most, and thank you for letting me love him, Kim, is going to be Senator Newman. He and I were seatmates for 12 years. I wouldn't move my seat, and he wouldn't move his, because I always felt comfortable with Steve. I knew when I was away from my seat, whether it was to go to the ladies' room or whether it was to go to get lunch, Steve knew that my vote was always going to be opposite of his. So when I was gone, he would always vote me right. And with the retirement of all of these wonderful friends, I am going to be the senior-most person in this body, because when I got here, none of you were here but Janet and Dick. And Cree and I were elected at the same time. Tom is retiring. Okay, but I'm saying with everybody who's retiring, okay? Cree was elected to the House of Delegates in House District 18, and me in Senate District 18. But Cree came over later. So as I stated before, Sasslaw, with all of the retirements, I will be the senior-most person of this body, and I pray that you all will pray for me, that I don't become the senior-most person like Dick Sasslaw. But I'm going to miss, I don't want to be the senior person who's walking around talking to everybody all day, Dick. But anyway, Madam President, I'm out of order. But I am going to miss all of you so very, very much. Chap, I remember when you came to my office when you were running for office, when you decided you were going to run for higher office, and asked me for an ungodly amount of money, but I gave it to you anyway. So I'm going to miss all of you. So now, Madam President, I will do what you asked me to do, I will follow instructions. Madam President, I move that the Senate do now recess pursuant to HJR 6001 until reconvened with at least 48 hours' notice by the call of the Chair of the Senate Committee on Rules.
The question is, shall the Senate recess pursuant to House Joint Resolution 6001 until reconvened with at least 48 hours' notice by the call of the Chair of the Senate Committee on Rules? All in favor of that motion? Will say aye. Those opposed, no? The ayes have it. The motion is agreed to. The Senate will now recess. Have a good time.